Partial minute.
I've got six o'clock.
Oh, I do too now.
And we are, we are live on YouTube, so you may begin when you're.
All right. Good evening, everyone. And welcome to our second budget work session of the Board of Directors of Rest and Association on this Monday, July 19th, 2021. This is a virtual meeting. So it, uh, we have quorum. It is 6:00 PM and I'm going to call this budget work session to order. I have no opening remarks, so I would like a motion to approve the agenda for this evening. I saw John's hand go up. Is there a second? Tim, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed out there? Upstaying?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. The motion carries. Okay. Do we have any member comments? Um, anybody sign up in advance, Christina?
No, nobody signed up, but if anybody would like to comment, raise your hand.
As a reminder, um, this is a budget work session. And so if you have any comments pertaining to, to budget, not capital projects, that will be our next work session, but everything else. You're welcome to speak for three minutes if you represent an organization. For five. Any raised hands?
I am not seeing any.
Okay. Then we can move right on to the next item on the agenda. Which is just very briefly, and Christina, are you able to bring that up on the screen? The, um, approved biennial budget development timeline?
Yes, one second. Okay, can, can you see this?
Uh, you need to, yeah, it's, it's, the page is lit. If you can scroll up a little bit, great, thank you. So, yeah, this is just briefly a reminder that this is the 2022-23 biennial budget development timeline that the board approved in March. And, uh, just to briefly review where we are, we're on schedule and some areas we're a little ahead of schedule. So, um, um, the, uh, the, the member suggestions have been reviewed. They were brought, uh, they were reviewed by the board in the, at the May meeting. And I believe they have also been reviewed by fiscal. So, uh, tonight, as I mentioned, is the second of three, um, budget work sessions that the board voted on, uh, at the June meeting. And, uh, I'm sorry, at the May meeting, yes. And, uh, the next one will be a joint budget work session with the Fiscal Committee on August 18th. So if there's any questions about the timeline. If not, then we can move on to item E, which is to review 2022-23 projected new revenue and expenses, including the CEO's recommendations. So with that, I turn this over to the CEO, Hank Litch.
Oh, thank, thank you, Karen. Christina, could you bring the slides back up, please? We'll just go through the sheets that we, we handed out. As Christine is doing that, uh, I believe this is all was shared with you all ahead of, ahead of time. What we're gonna talk about is, um, looking at, there's very little new revenue that we're looking at generating, uh, right now in 2022-2023. So we'll go through that fairly quickly. We did look at quite a few expenses and I will share that with you in more details. We get into it and explain how that, that works. And then, um, the, the final thing we'll need to do is bring to your attention questions I'm being asked by staff or that I currently have, that would be helpful if we could come to some sort of answers on some of these as we look to put the next draft of the budget together. So this first sheet that's up and that's, that we're looking at right now is the revenue side. And as I said, um, we're not looking at generating right now, uh, this particular time, any additional new revenue, um, since last year in 2020 and this year in 2021, we've been affected by COVID. We're still trying to see where we're going to end up. And how the, how, what we're initiating this year is working out. The lines that look like they're, you know, redacted in black are not really being redacted. They are simply, uh, drawn through because those are not any line items in the budget that generate revenue. For example, um, I think ledger number 1700 is management services. So rather than confuse everybody, uh, we just kind of blacked those out. One area that, that we have been doing fairly well on the revenue side, um, and it's revenue we, we, we receive from home sales. And we have been seeing, uh, significant, uh, growth in home sales in Reston. It's a popular place to live and people are moving in here. And I, I don't think homes are staying unsold on, on the, uh, on the, uh, staying unsold for very long, uh, before they sell. And they're selling, I think, at really good prices. So, um, I don't have the number of what we're projecting, where we're going to, um, be by the end of 2022, because I can't project what, what, how many homes are going to be up for sale and continue selling, but we do receive them, receive revenue because of all the services Covenantis provides during the sales pro, uh, process. So that's one item where, you know, we, we do anticipate, we believe there will be some growth going into, um, 2022 and 2023. I just can't project it. If you're gonna slide down a little bit, Christina, next slide. I don't know if you can make that a little bit bigger. I have the hard copy in front of me. It might help people if they can see it just a little bit bigger. There you go. One thing that we, we do believe, uh, would generate some additional revenue, it has to do with pickleball. Pickleball, uh, has done exceedingly well, um, this year. It's, it's, it's very, very popular. And we are launching a pickleball tournament, um, that is gonna take place in September. And we, we're anticipating, again, strong sales for that, strong sponsorship, uh, and we think it's going to do well. We've thrown some numbers in here and it's not a, a large sum of revenue, but if, if we're able to in one way, shape or form, bring pickleball to the South Side, expand, um, the number of playing courts we have in Reston. We do believe that in 2022, we could generate some additional revenue through both, um, you know, membership sales as well as, uh, addition of another pickleball tournament. The, the other thing that we looked into, um, and I'll get into this more in the expense side, all the way down there in the bottom, we looked at three separate alternatives, uh, for creating an environmental services department 2022. This came across as a priority from, um, some members, select members of the board and the EAC. And we've, we kind of looked at, you know, on the revenue side of things, and we really didn't see any way that it would generate a significant amount of revenue. So that's why I have question marks there. There may be some possibilities as we look at it a little bit more in depth. But, uh, right now on the initial review, we did not see any revenue, potential through creating, uh, an environmental, uh, formal environmental services department. And I'll go into the expense side of that here, uh, and I'll look just here in a moment. So that, that's kind of where we are in the revenue. There's still a little bit of thought to be put there. It really depends a little bit more on the next several series of slides, which are the, the expense side of things and what we all ultimately feel comfortable with assessments. And if there's a gap that we, we would like to rethink about generating some additional revenue for, to kind of breach that gap between what we feel comfortable with, maybe an assessment, uh, level being and still a little bit more need. So if you go to the next slide, please, Christina. This one, um, has a lot more detail in it and, um, there's a couple of things I, I need to explain and hopefully you're able to figure it out when you went through it. There, there's a red column, uh, that's marked all 2022 budget. That includes everything that I was able to document that we have that was either recommended by members or recommended by board or asked for by staff. So that is all inclusive of what has been asked for in 2022. The blue column is what I think we might want to seriously consider doing. So you could look at, right now, that's the first draft of the CEO's recommendations. In the blue column, that would be in the middle. And then you have 2023 budget, which is, there's some add-ons that would, would, if we started in 2022, we'd probably have to add in 2023 and I'll, I'll try to explain those. These numbers are all additions to what is the 2021 budget column. So while you'll see, for example, in the first one where it says communications, and then under all, it has a, a number of 35,000, that would be in addition to what we already budgeted in 2021. We looked at expenses, um, uh, with the current programming, um, and, and way we're structured, and unless we want to end some programs, we really don't see where there's a whole lot of, of revenue or expense that we can cut. So there's not any difference in the 2021 budget column. That is what is the approved budget. The adjacent columns, the red, the blue, and then the 2023 black would be in addition to what is currently in 2021. The final column, all the way to the right, it says, um, budget question sheet number. What follows was, uh, I think also was included in your packet, were a series of 11 questions. And, uh, those numbers equate to, um, the questions on that sheet. And we'll, we'll go through this quickly, answer, or as quickly as I can, answer any questions you might have. And then we can move on to the question sheet that I, I've put in place. Um, so it makes sense, everyone see how this thing's working? And again, I'm working from, uh, the general ledger code. So that's, so the column on the far left, the functional service, uh, and programs come from, directly from the general ledger. So under, uh, communications, um, we had, um, planned to do, uh, an upgrade in the website. Several meetings back, we elected to move that over to the IT committee. And right now, uh, that's one of my questions we'll get to, uh, when we get to the question sheet. I'm not exactly sure where that stands. However, there is a, besides the, the capital, uh, expense of creating the website, there was an annual fee to, you know, licensing fee. That right now is what's listed in the red column under communications. It's roughly $35,000. Not knowing if that website is going to be done in 2022, I have put that as a no under my column, the CEO's recommendation, because I, I'm not sure where we're going to be with the website. And the, the N slash C means no change because I don't have enough information. So for 2023, I'm not projecting anything for the website until I get more information. Moving down, uh, where it says computer services. Um, under the red column, uh, what had been recommended or, uh, suggested by staff was that we, um, at some point in 2022, add two additional tech people to support, IT s- support to help us with some of the ongoing, services that we, we offer, um, including becoming experts in, um, Microsoft 365 and Microsoft A- Analytics and that sort of thing. It's a support staff, uh, and try to move further and further away from the contracted service that we do with Red River and, and other contractors. I'm not sure where that's going to end. So for those two individuals with, with benefits, with roughly cost us about $120,000. I'm not recommending moving forward with that until we get some feedback from the IT committee. So under my column, the blue column, I'm rock, walking, marking that as a no. And under 2023, I'm not sure. So I'm not sure what we, where we're gonna end up. So that would be for a follow-on, uh, draft budget. Uh, under administrative, um, I'm sorry, under corporation and board, I'm seeing no change. That's where the board expense is paid for and where the elections fall, that sort of thing. So I'm not really seeing any change of significance there, maybe some inflationary changes as we finalize the budget, but nothing significant to, to mark in, in those columns just yet. Under, um, administrative, uh, and member services, we were talking about, putting in an automated system that would permit us to get members' feedback, whether it was on the phone or, um, or on, uh, the website or on the computer when they're doing a transaction. Um, there's a, there's a slight glitch with that. We've discovered that we, we needed to move our web, our, our phone service, off our current service onto, um, kind of a web-based service, which is something Claire has been talking about doing. Again, with the IT committee in place, I'm not sure if that's going to be something we ultimately decide to do or not do. So I've left that with question marks. Right now, though, we're, we're not planning, uh, until we get some more information on putting in place an automated, um, member or customer's feedback system just yet. Um, moving down the column to where it says finance. Um, we, we see two things going on there. First, there was a suggestion to add a CFO, um, to our payroll. That position is probably about $150,000 a year position. Under, um, the red column, um, for two, for 2022, you see it listed as $100,000. Mainly because if we, we think we probably wouldn't be able to bring that individual on until maybe sometime in the second quarter of next year. Also, underneath the red column, you're seeing an insurance increase. That is basically the insurance increase that we, we are anticipating, uh, for the rest of, of this calendar year, uh, as well as what we're, we think we're going to experience, uh, next year. Not knowing what it's going to be in 2023, I just extended it over. It probably would be a little bit higher in 2023, but those numbers are pretty solid. And you'll also see, uh, that in 2023, we've added the additional $50,000 for a four-year of having a CFO, if we elect to do that. But you also will see under my column, I'm not suggesting we do that in 2022. So that's where we get there. Under, um, management services, that, um, basically there's no changes there. That's just basic services that, uh, that we do to, to operate as an organization. So there's no, no changes. Um, under human resources, what you're seeing, um, in both the red and the blue column, have to do with, uh, four items. The first is, um, back in 2019, I've mentioned this on several occasions. In 2019, the, um, the 2019 board approved the Archer, um, study and report in both the first phase and the second phase of it. We did not initiate the second phase because of COVID. What the second phase does, um, is bring approximately 47 to 48 current employees that are below their, their minimum for their salary range to their minimum. And then it brings another five employees that have been with us for more than five years, which is the other thing that we have as, as our, our guiding principles. If you've been with an organization for at least five years or longer, we think you should be at your midpoint of the salary range. So that $176,000, um, is basically implementing the second phase of the Archer study that was approved in 2019. Again, moving 47 employees to the midpoint of their, uh, to the, to the, to the, the, uh, the minimum of their salary range. They currently are below that. And moving, uh, five individuals to the midpoint. These are individuals that have been with us for, for more than five years. And you'll see that I, I agree with that as well as what's in the red column. The second number down on that, the $219,000 number would be, uh, an average, pay increase for the entire staff of 3%. In the last page of this, this sheet, I, uh, Melissa has done a very good job of getting data from, um, other area, uh, agencies and organizations. Fairfax County, um, Herndon, um, Montgomery Association, Columbia Association. And it looks like right now that everybody's planning on a 3% pay increase. So, um, that is what I put in place and that's what that $219,228 amount equates to. Um, based on, uh, where we are, uh, with our current payroll and where we believe, uh, some additions would be made, what we, what we see for benefits, uh, costing us about $144,000 more than they have cost us in 2021. And then finally, the, the bottom number, the $12,030, that is what the, the minimum wage going up to $11 is going to impact primarily our seasonal employees, um, in 2022. And then it would go up a little bit more in 2023 when the, uh, wage goes, is planned, is scheduled to go up to $15 an hour. So that's what the human resource numbers, uh, equate to. Could you, could you slide it down a little bit, Christina, please? Okay, um, right, right there. Under operations, there's no change in what we currently are doing from an operational standpoint. Under covenants, um, there is no recommended change until 2023, uh, at which time, um, Cam had suggested that he would be ready and the organization would be in place to, uh, bring on an administrative assistant. Um, and this administrative assistant, um, would be utilized to offset, um, time that some of the other frontline, um, covenant staff are, are, are being utilized for paperwork and scheduling meetings and that sort of thing. Cam does not suggest doing it in 2022. He's, uh, asked to do it in 2023. Currently, there is no administrative support in covenants, uh, at all. Can you slide it up some, some additionally? Okay, um, moving further down, we don't anticipate any changes, um, in Walker Nature Center. When we look at central services facility, uh, you'll see that I, I've indicated in both, the red column as well as the blue column in addition of $110,000. Basically, um, in order to look for ways to, to cut our costs during the COVID situation, one of the things we did is reduce the number of seasonal staff, um, in, um, the, um, central services. We essentially cut them in half. They typically have about 18 individuals that work seasonally. These are the individuals that mow grass, they paint, um, benches, they do all the general maintenance things, um, that we do, whether on a weekly basis or a seasonal basis. It's, it's really starting to show that we're not able to keep up with that. It's not just the, the grass we're doing well with, but when it comes to pavilion painting and other sort of things like that, we're really slipping. And eventually this catches up to us and, and ends up in Chris's area of the operation when it comes to a capital improvement. So the more general maintenance we can do, um, the better. And that's why I'm recommending, um, and has been recommended, uh, in the, the full list of bringing back central services facilities, seasonal staff to a full complement of 18. And again, that would cost us about $110,000. Moving down to the, the rest of the, the columns, all the way down through, um, aquatics, we're basically seeing no real change in operations, um, and really no new, new change in expenses. Coming down into tennis, we, um, we do anticipate that if we're a, able to add pickleball, again, it's pickleball, which is so popular, add it to the South Side, that, um, there's some additional seasonal instructors and seasonal help we would need. And that's what that $15,000 in the, uh, the, the red column would recommend, uh, would look like. And then we anticipate perhaps as growth would, would, would dictate some additional help in 2023. That's a question mark for me because unless we're actually adding additional pickle mark, uh, pickleball to the South Side, I don't know if this would be, uh, a necessary expense. So that's why under my column, under the blue column, I have it marked as blue, uh, as a blue question mark. Can you move down a little bit more, Christina, please? Remove it, the screen higher. Okay, that's, I think that's good. Um, the next expense that we anticipate and we think would be, uh, worth investing in has to do with adding an additional, uh, individual to, um, the, to Chris's end of the operation, the capital projects in, in a, uh, area. We believe by adding another, um, basically adding another capital project staff member, someone who could manage additional staffs, that we could even do, do more. Chris and his team have been doing a wonderful job, kind of working their way through all these hosts of capital projects, anywhere from three and a half to four and a half million dollars worth every year. Many of them are the high-ticket items that we, we, we all know about, um, whether they be a pool restoration, but some of them are just smaller projects. And so they, they all require, uh, supervision and oversight by a staff member. We think by adding an additional staff member, which would cost us anywhere between 70 and 80,000 dollars. So I, I put the higher number in here, um, just for this initial go-round. Uh, we think that that would enable us to, um, move more of the items into capital projects that currently get what we call carry forward, that don't necessarily get done in that budget year and get moved to the next year. We would reduce those, um, we, we believe significantly. Can you move down, uh, Christina, please? Now, now comes to the environmental service piece. We looked at this and there's, um, three recommendations, um, that have come, come across that I think kind of need to, we tried to divide them into three separate items. One initiative that I think came from EAC and several other folks that sent in a lot of, uh, recommendations was to create an environment, environmental services department in 2022. And this department would include an environmental services director, two additional staff members to kind of do, do work, and a little bit of a, a budget so that they had things they could do. For example, plant more trees or contract to have more trees planted. That in the long run would cost us about $250,000. There's been another, uh, suggestion, and this came from staff, is that perhaps we should hire an environmental services director. However, place them in the natural areas, uh, the natural, the services director, place them in the existing natural areas department, which currently exists. We could indeed bring on the additional, perhaps in 2023, bring on the additional, two, two individuals to support a lot of this work. Maybe not pay them quite as much, uh, as you would a director, but more than likely by the end of 2023, it still would cost us about, um, $250,000. The other aspect, which is right now my recommendation, uh, which is to stay the course. We, um, we have individuals assigned to this work. They are qualified to perform this work. And when you kind of look at what all this adds up to, it might be the one way to go with it. But those are the three options, the way we see it. Option A and option B are more than likely going to cost us in the neighborhood of $250,000 after, as we get into 2023. Uh, at, uh, option C would not see an increase at all. It, it would just be carried on by the, the current staff that we have in place.
And President? So, Tim?
Karen, I think you're on mute.
I am. Yes, Tim?
Just a quick question of clarification. I know that you're juggling a number of different member comments, but I wanted to clarify that the two comments from the Environmental Advisory Committee, uh, one for a senior environmental officer and the other for seas, two seasonal workers with associated, uh, equipment and, and, and related expenses. EAC provided ranges for each of those. And if you take the high end of each range and add them together, you get $203,000. If you take the low end of each range and add them together, you get $165,000. So I just wanted to clarify that because it makes it sound like EAC's proposals total 250. And again, I know you're juggling a number of different member comments, but I wanted to clarify that the EAC proposals are actually less. are actually less of an expense than what we have here. Thank you.
All right, I, I appreciate that. Um, and, and you're right. How, however, we did look at a few other costs internally. Um, and these numbers, as I, as I said, these are the first kind of blush of expenses and they always are going to run a little bit hu- a little bit high. Um, and we can, we can whittle all this down as we start to get some feedback from all of you. So, so thank you.
Thanks.
But as, as you kind of look at these, these three columns, um, what, you know, worst case scenario, the way I see it for the all-in with all the suggestions, as, as Tim has just pointed out that I'm, we're juggling, uh, all-in in 2012, or 2022, I should say, we're looking at an increase of about $1,285,000. Um, down below in red, I put what that the assessment would look like. That would be about a $60 increase in the assessment. Uh, there's a note there that points out that for every dollar increase in assessment, i- it generates about 21,200, not about, it generates $21,230 in revenue. Um, on the blue column, all the things that, that I was recommending based on this first go-through, um, is just about $900,000, uh, 893, um, which would grow the assessments about, uh, $42,000, $42. Um, and then to 2023, the way we're seeing it, remember, if you go back through that list, there were, there are still some question marks that we don't have answers to. Um, right now that would look like, uh, about $440,000 or in 2023, potential assessment increase of about $20 or $21. So that, that's kind of where we are first blush. Um, um, and I could either feel some questions there, or I could go through the list of questions I, I have that are kind of related to this. It's, it's really, um, up to all of you.
Um, do, do people want to, um, what's the general consensus here? Do people want to ask questions now or wait until Hank has gone through his questions?
Got it. I, I have a question.
Yes, Mike.
Um, I think at the first go-around of these, uh, budget meetings, we had a whole wish list section, right? Um, and I'm wondering what happened to that and, and the feedback that we were going to get from staff on it.
This, uh, this includes the wish list the way I had it. Um,
Oh.
This is, unless there's something that we've missed that you would like me to add, this is what, what we had on the wish list.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, appreciate that, Hank. Maybe I'm, um, um, I'm just harboring my wish list items, which were a, a look at, uh, options for ADA compliance, um, where Larry was going to look at, um, where we might have some low hanging fruit, for example, um, and path, uh, intersections. That was, uh, something that I had asked for, but may, maybe that's a different, you put that in a different wish list.
No, 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 you, you're absolutely right. What, what, there's this, maybe I should have explained where we are. This is the operating, this is the operating revenue and expenses. Next.
I was gonna ask that. I was gonna ask that, Hank. Thank you for mentioning that. I kind of thought that might be what was going on.
Yeah, we, we, the way it was divided this year is the next session we have is to review all the capital. So any of the ADA improvements would, would, they, they would be new capital expenditures, as is with the pathways. So, um, this is just operating revenue and operating expenses. Um, and next, I think we're meeting in a, next month in August to review the capital side of things.
Got it. Okay. Sorry, my mistake.
Now, I should have explained that earlier. I, I apologize.
That's all right. That's, not at all, not at all. My oversight.
How, how about, maybe if I move on, uh, this kind of gives you a, a look right now of where we are. Uh, and maybe if we move on to the questions, we could, I think that's going to help, uh, refine some of these, you know, th- these numbers a little bit and actually help, help me do a better job putting the next iteration of the budget together.
That makes sense to me. Does anybody have issues with that? If we move on to item F?
I think Bob and John had their hands up. Oh, Jennifer.
I did, but I, I, I have one particular question, but I can, I have some bigger questions that I'm going to reserve for Hank's list of questions, but I can, I can hold all of my questions till then.
I just, I just wanted to make some observations about the, the organization of this. And I, I think, uh, staff did a, a great job in putting together this, this information. It's, it's much more, um, uh, understandable, uh, as to why things are happening than I've seen in past years. So thank you very much. But I, there are some limit, you know, there are some limitations. First of all, probably the one big thing is that we're looking at particularly the expense side, the operating expense side from a functional standpoint. So when you talk about, um, salary increases, they're spread. They were captured in HR, but they're spread among all of the service entities within the organization. So it's, it's, um, uh, labor costs are still going to be the single biggest component of operating expenses that we face. But keep that, keep that in mind. And I'm not suggesting it's wrong, but it's not, um, there's a, there's much more, much more to look at than just, you know, the, the numbers here. So as you go through this, be aware, uh, beware of that. We are going to, um, in, particularly in the future years, uh, um, based on this year's experience with the insurance portfolio or with the insurance, uh, portfolio that we, that we, that we require to have, um, it is likely that that is going to increase and, and I think it should be, um, I can't emphasize enough, these are increases, not the dollars attached to them. So be aware of that as you go through here and look at, at this. So being the bean counter that I am, uh, and have been, one of the things that you want to, you know, folk, one of the things you can focus on is total expenses, operating expenses, um, will increase from on, uh, the recommended side of about 6% over last year. So in order to be kind of equal, uh, where, from where we were last year, we're going to have to increase the income side in order to be at equilibrium. And a lot of that, uh, which we're not going to discuss this evening is going to be driven by the capital project. So keep all that in mind as we go, go through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob. Yeah, th- those are all very good points and it's, um, this is, you know, our, our budget is fairly, it's, it's hard to explain on one page, especially when we're not in person. Um, so I, I, I agree with everything Bob's sharing. So right now I think it would be helpful, let me move into some of the questions that I'm being asked by staff or I, I have as I, as we start to try to put this together. So, so Christina, could you go down to the next, next page, please? Okay, and you might want to try to make that just a little bit larger.
Excuse me, Hank, before you go on, I know a, a member has raised her hand, but the member comment portion has passed. So, uh, you're welcome to put something in the chat or send us an email. Go ahead, Hank.
Okay, the, the, uh, one question that, that has, has come up is especially since the board's decision to move the website project over to the IT committee, um, has, has, has come up is where, where is this all going to fall? Who's responsible, um, for kind of moving that forward? Um, and, you know, so A through E are kind of very specific questions, but, um, that's what I'm, I'm really looking for is a little bit of instruction of what we need to do with the website. Uh, it was in communications, they worked on it for about a year. And, um, now I'm, I, I just need a little bit of, um, support in understanding how you want us to progress with it going forward. And that way I then can convert that into some sort of budgetary, um, uh, information. So, um, I, I'm assuming that since it's going to go to IT committee, that, that, that department staff member that's going to be responsible for it is the IT staff. Is that reasonable or should I? Yes, yes, Bob. Um, my opinion is that, um, IT is responsible for the technical implementation and maintenance of any IT program that, uh, RA implements. The actual, uh, use of the, of the programs is, is the department that makes use of it. So, um, as we, as we put together, um, the plan for the website, uh, IT is, has, is going to shoulder a significant portion of the initial costs to get it implemented. And then it's going to hand it over, hand it off to the communications department or whomever you choose to actually be responsible for its use and maintenance on a long-term basis, whether that's internally maintained or done by a third party. That's my view.
Madam President?
Yes, yes, John.
Uh, I concur with Bob. Hank, I don't believe that the board intended to move the website over to the IT committee. Um, rather, we referred it to the IT committee for technical review. So in my view, what we did and wanted to do was to leave the responsibility for directing the design of the website with the communications department. The IT department in turn is responsible for ensuring that any hardened hardware, software chosen to optimize the installation, um, maintenance and functioning of, of that design, uh, they are responsible for that. And the IT committee is to advise primarily the I, is pri- is to advise primarily the IT department and only secondarily concerning technical matters, the communications department. So I, I, I don't see it as a wholesale, at all, as a wholesale, uh, referral of the whole thing under the IT committee.
That's very helpful.
That's my view. That, that's what I think I heard or understood the board to mean. I think, Bob, you said pretty much the same thing. And, and, um, yeah, it's, uh, the responsibility for the design remains with the I, uh, communications department. But it's to, it, the IT department has to be responsible for ensuring the compatibility of the IT system to do that design. And, and the IT committee is to advise the IT department primarily. That's how, that's my view.
Okay, that, that helps me and, and I think helps the staff understand. And we, I certainly can convert that into, um, some budget pieces moving forward into 2022. So, um, I think that gives me what I need to move forward on the IT side of things.
Hank, I think other board members need to chime in if they disagree with Bob and/or me.
Anybody else have any comments about that?
Jennifer.
Hi, Jennifer. Go ahead.
Um, I, I agree with both John and, and Bob, but Hank, I really think that this is, this is an operational call. I would hope that the answer that you would give as a CEO is essentially the answer that Bob and John just gave. But I don't think that this is a, a board call. It's, you know, we asked the IT committee to look at it. We asked that the IT committee look at it from an IT perspective. And we asked that all the board's, um, questions were answered before we moved to the next stage of approving it. That's, that's all that, that we asked. As far as who in your staff does these items, that, that I think is your call. But I, I do agree with John and Bob that that's, that, that's how a normal operation from my perspective or from my experience has been run, is that all IT assets have IT involvement, kind of just like Prac. You know, we have a committee that, uh, of members that helps us, um, with feedback on our facilities. And you decide who within your team, you know, implements, um, whatever Prac brings to the board and whatever the board approves.
That's perfect. That's exactly how we were operating and certainly we, that's how we were doing it with Clara. But, uh, we weren't quite sure what direction we were gi- we were given following the meeting with the I, when the IT committee was, uh, appointed or created. So this is very helpful and I think I, I, I know how to move it forward. So I'm, I'm good to go on, on number one. So thank you. Um, if you can.
Hank, you have other questions on number one that I would like to address.
Certainly.
Uh, you talked about needing a new scope and a new RFP. And then, again, this is my view and it, I may not have understood the board fully on this. But I believe all the board wanted to ensure was that whatever website was set up now, that, that it'd be compatible now with single input for staff across the program. So data input, staff only has to do it once and, and, and then update it as needed. And it will, it will ripple across without further, uh, human intervention across all programs and platforms. So that, that's one thing. And then, and secondly, we understood, we understood staff and our consultants to say, well, we can't, we cannot at this point have a single sign-in for users. But what we want to make sure is that the sys- that the website being installed will allow it's compatible with a, a, a future and not distant future, uh, attempt to get single sign-in for users. Is it, so, so why, why, why do we need a new scope and RFP?
Single sign-on is, um, one, the, the contractor we were working with, uh, their, their contract only was good for 30 days. So that's expired. Um, and the other aspect of single sign-on is not going to be in a, a possibility for the kind of budget we have set aside. In fact, in, in talking to others, single sign-on could be quite expensive. So I'm not sure if that contractor could provide single sign-on in the timeframe that you're, you're, you're hoping for. We will go back to them and ask them. Um, but a year or two, I'm not, I don't believe, because of some of the other special applications that we use, both in covenants and are currently using in, um, Parks and Rec, getting that all aligned as single sign-on, um, could be quite challenging and quite expensive.
If I may just try once more to clarify what I tried to say and perhaps not very clearly, is that I think we all understood that we could not immediately do single sign-on.
Okay. Well, we'll.
What we want is the, the website that we have installed not be incompatible with future single sign-on. At least that was my view. And, and I, I not only, I, I beg board members to say if they see it differently, but I think we all understood that single sign-on now was not possible.
Yeah, we, we all are on the same page with single sign-on. We all want it. Um, but it's been a little frustrating trying to, to, um, when we start to think about the cost and what actually has to happen. But, so we're there and we can move, we can move this forward now. I think I know where our, I think I understand the direction now.
And, and the third point that I want to make under point one is I totally share with your concern, share your concern that we do whatever is necessary to ensure that any conflicts of interest or any divulging of, of proprietary information of, of RA be protected by whoever works on this, including the IT committee. So, uh, whatever legally we can do to ensure that, that protection against conflict of interest and, uh, against divulging, um, of proprietary information about RA, I think we should do so.
Okay.
You'd call that out.
Yes, I did. Okay.
So those are my views. Other board members have not spoken to all these issues.
I I will just say that, John, the I I had that your question about the the single entry for staff. I I thought that that had been, when we had the meeting with the Civic Plus people, of course, now we don't know if we'll be going with Civic Plus. But at that time, they they said, yes, that would absolutely be possible. And and the other issue with the single sign on, which everybody wants, of course, is that we have contracts with Member Suite and RecTrack right now that we can't get out of. So we would be paying double. Civic Plus did have a product that would allow for that.
Right. All I'm all I'm saying is I think we understood that. We understood the assurance of Civic Plus that we would have to enter and change data only once, and it would ripple through all programs and platforms. And and we understood that single sign on for for members would have to be at a later time.
Yeah.
But we didn't want any built-in incompatibility with either of those features.
Yes, I I will make make sure. And now, as I said, this has helped me a lot. I know it's helped the other staff that are listening. So we will we'll make sure we move forward on on the IT. Now I can start to put some budget numbers together on it. Just as a comment, one of the things that showed up on chat that said, communications expense of $1 million is a boondoggle. And I just want to address that because that's, I think, a misconception. It's been out there for quite some time. The communications budget for 2021 is $886,000, not $1 million. And included in that is all the membership services staff. These are the people that stand and take members, because communications also includes member services. These are the people that service rentals. These are the people that stand in our member services area downstairs and deal with member services issues. So when you take those folks out of that expense, you bring down the cost of communications dramatically. So I I just would hope that that rumor that we're spending $1 million on communications and that it's a boondoggle can somehow go by the wayside because it's not accurate and it's not true. So let me just move on down to question number two. This is one that I think we're all struggling with a little bit. And it it has to do with moving forward with Shadowwood Pool and Tall Oaks Pool on some scheduled maintenance that we've been holding off on.
Hank, sorry, before you before you jump off to pools, I just have one quick request. The communications piece has come up a few times before, and I think probably Mike or Jennifer brought it up. If we could give members a breakdown, that would help. So if we could break it down as to how much of it goes to member services versus the rest, that would help us big time.
We'll certainly do that. We'll we'll get that and we'll we'll make sure it gets spread out to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Just a reminder, protocol wise, please, please let me know if you wish to speak for everybody.
I think we've had our hands up, Karen, that you're.
Just let me, yeah, I mean, I'm I'm writing. I can I can see your video, but if I don't recognize you, just say I have my hand up. Thanks.
Okay.
Karen.
Yes.
Um, I think we're about to get to the pools. And the pools are triple RF capital expense, and that is for next budget session. So I'm not sure that we answer number two today. And to be completely honest, I'm afraid if we talk about number two today, it's going to send us down a rabbit hole that's not going to allow us to get to the rest of the operating budget.
This is fine. At some point in time, I do need some instructions on whether to move forward on Shadowwood and Tall Oaks on their maintenance or not. So we can, I I agree with you. You can take us down a rabbit hole we don't want to go down tonight. But at some point in time, I do need to know.
Are you okay with August 18?
I'm I'm fine with that, if you guys are okay with it. It gives everybody a lot of time to think about it. So now it comes down to number three. This is one that doesn't impact the the budget going forward. And that is the question, do I, do we have permission to implement Phase Two of the Archer study or not? Is this board willing to implement it? Or do you want us to postpone it or take a vote not to implement it going forward?
Yes, Bob.
That's a significant amount of money that that will definitely will impact the 2022 budget.
Hank, could you could you repeat again what's in Phase Two of the Archer study? Because I know when you were just walking through the piece before.
In a nutshell, what Phase Two does, we we implemented Phase One going into 2020 because it was approved in 2019. We elected, or I asked the board, I suggested to hold off on the second phase until we got into the going into the 2021 budget. And then with with COVID striking, I elected, I I suggested to the board not to implement it at that time. What that $176,000 is associated with is is this. The salary ranges of every position at Rest and Association was evaluated and recalculated compared to competitors around that there are competitors in Northeast Virginia, Northern Virginia. And slight adjustments were made in many cases to our positions. What it, what we discovered in doing that is about 47 individuals, 47 positions, were not even being paid at the minimum of this new adjusted salary range. So the the majority of the $176,000 is to move 47 individuals that work for RA to the minimum salary range for their position. There are, then, the other aspect that came out of the Archer study was that by five years or in a five-year timeframe, we either, we need to move, have moved our individuals through pay increases or bonuses or merit pay increases of whatever way, shape or form to the midpoint of their salary range. All of this was designed as a way to retain staff in a very competitive market. So that $176,000 equates to moving 47 individuals that are currently below the minimum for their salary range to the minimum of their salary range and moving five individuals that have been here, in most cases, more than six or seven years, to the midpoint of their salary range, which is what our new policy is.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, John.
Madam President.
Oh, sorry.
I I support this move. I believe that if we don't do it in timely fashion, we will have wasted the great effort at our compensation study because it it will be become soon out of whack in a serious way, and we will fall behind our regional competitors in competitiveness in hiring talented people.
Thank you. Was that, did you have more, John?
No, that's all.
Okay, Tim.
I agree with Director Mooney. I think Hank has assembled an outstanding staff, and I think they should be paid fairly. So I would answer number three, yes, implement the second phase.
I will raise my hand and say that I feel the same way. And and we're we're already behind, and we're going to get behind her if we don't do this. So that's how I feel. And Jennifer?
I would just suggest that, Tom, if on an explanation says you start to present the budget, if you could separate out the amount of money that it takes to get staff to the minimum versus the amount that it takes to get staff to the midpoint, I think that would be helpful to the board going forward. And to Melissa, you know, that data is old. And I know that it doesn't seem old, but it's old. COVID, you know, turned this entire salary stuff upside down. And so, you know, Melissa, if you want to just do a little bit of, you know, feeling around for any salary surveys that you have or the networks that you work with to see if you're seeing any differences between what the consultant reported a couple of years ago versus what we're seeing in the market now? And if there are any updates that you might make to the consultant's recommendations, I think that that would be helpful.
Okay, we can get that information. I think Melissa's on the call, so we'll we'll get this information.
Thanks, Jennifer. Anybody else? Because I can't see all of you with the screen share. So if you have your hand up and would like to say something, let me know.
Yeah, hey, Karen, it's it's Mike. Just just real quick, I support including the Archer adjustments in the budget, too.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay.
Okay, this is, again, this is, this is helping a lot. So thank you. And I I know this may be tedious, but it is helping a lot as we start to put all this together. Number four has to do with what you feel comfortable with as a percentage increase. At the bottom of page five, if you have, you printed this out or you have it on your your own screen. We put together a schedule that that we Melissa and her team went out and spoke to Fairfax County, Falls Church, Herndon, Montgomery Village, and what's not listed there is Columbia Association. And all of them, except Fairfax County, was indicated they were planning on a merit pay increase of 3.5%. All the rest of them had indicated a 3% pay increase. That is what I put in the number, that if you, both in the red column and the blue column. And I just wanted to make sure you all felt comfortable with that. And if that's what you feel comfortable with, then that that number will stay solid as we continue through this expense budgeting process. I'm not, I guess, I won't ask you to vote because I might be uncomfortable right now. But I will say that I'm I'm assuming that that's the good number, especially since we have metrics from other surrounding Northeast Ohio venues. Northeast, I'm sorry, North Northern Virginia venues. And I can just stick with the 3% unless someone tells me otherwise.
Jennifer?
I think that we need to add Fairfax County to the list. I also would love to add Columbia Association. I think that 3% is a good target to to put in this first draft of the budget. But I think it's entirely too early to know what the salary increase market might be. We don't typically see that until September is when we first start to see some good reliable data, unless it's truly with a county like Fairfax, I believe, goes July 1st to June 30th. You know, entities like that, you might see a little at a different time. But by and large, I I don't know that we're going to have a national-based understanding or a regional-based understanding until that September, October timeframe. And then I would also encourage that we add just the the nonprofit world, not only 501(c)(4)'s, but (c)(3)'s and (c)(6)'s, the other, the other nonprofits, because we do compete for talent with those other associations, not in every position that we have. But if you're going to hire, you know, typically the office-based staff that RA hires, that recruiting market is going to include other nonprofit associations because it's the same type of skills that we're requiring for the for a majority of our positions as other nonprofits.
Okay.
Madam President.
Yep, I I hold on one second, John, because I think Hank was going to respond to that and then.
No, I we will do this. The one, one number that was not included, but I do have it on my sheet, is the Columbia Association, which also was 3%. So I think that was brought up. So we have Columbia Association, which is like us, Montgomery Village, which is like us, and the others, as you as you note, are government. So we certainly can look into the 501(c)(3), 501(c)(4) and 501(c)(6) market and see what they're going to be doing and get back with the number in September.
Yes, John.
Madam President, I I just, I too support Hank using a 3% average increase in his planning, and I will probably support it. I I have studied Columbia Association, and they've already adopted their 2022 budget. So if it's 3%, if it is, that means that 3% for them is nailed down. The the one thing I I believe, I want to make sure that we all understand, that I understand this and we all understand it, we are indeed talking about a 3% merit pool.
Yes.
We are not talking about a COLA.
No.
We are not talking about any other kind of cross-the-board increase. And so that it is only on average. It's a three, it's 3% of the payroll which goes into the pool based on merit. Is that correct, Hank?
Yes, we all, our pay increases are merit-based. I'm just looking for, you know, I need a budget number. I need a percentage that we put in there that we, the pool that we're working from. So, yes, everything we do is merit-based. Okay, unless there's other questions or comments, I I think I have my marching orders on that one. Going down to number five, there has been some some push by, again, this is a big-ticket item. Do you want us to continue factoring in pursuing a CFO or or not? You can see, I I did not think it's necessary. However, others do, and others in the fiscal committee believe it's necessary. So I will pursue it and include it in the budget. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page, and I have, again, have my marching orders of what to do.
Yes, John.
When when we last discussed this, the the reason for recommending this is that board, many board members, perhaps not all, but many, if not most, and members of the fiscal committee, notably its chair, expressed concern that there was a body of strategic budgeting work that wasn't being done. Now, we promised Hank, and I don't know that we have complied with this promise. We said that we would identify that body of strategic budget work that we were concerned may not be getting done. So as, so Hank said he's going to put this into the budget so we can see the number. That's fine. But I I think what we owe Hank and one another and the fiscal committee is for us as a board to say, what is that body of strategic budgetary work that we're concerned may not be getting done? And and I think that will make our discuss, because disembodied numbers are dangerous things. But they need to be embodied in a body of work. And and so I think we, board members, owe it to Hank to articulate that body of work that we we feel needs to be done. Does that make sense?
Yeah, to me it does. And so if if you did have a chance to put some of that together, that would help. And but in the meantime, I will leave it in the the budget going forward. So so I've gotten some, I've gotten direction, whether to keep it in the budget or not. I'm going to keep it in the budget for now. So thank you.
Yes, Jennifer.
I'm I'm not sure that when the board asked, I'd like to hear from other board members, and maybe Dave from from fiscal's perspective, I'm not sure when we asked for that lack of of concentration on the areas that we think need concentration, that we were asking to add another staff person to the finance team. So I guess I would just ask, I believe we have seven finance department staff members. And my my guess is, but I would, I would defer to Melissa, can we look up what the average number of finance staff members, you know, are for an organization of our size and our complexity? And see if we're on target, are we ahead, are we behind? I think that that would give us some indication. I think that that would give us some indication as to whether we need an extra person, FTE, or do we just need some concentration efforts in finance on the things that we're lacking?
We certainly can, can look into that, look at a similar type of organizations. Although some will be larger and obviously one will be larger and several, many of the others will be smaller, but we certainly can take a, take a look at that.
I think that, I think that's a good point, Jennifer. And I, I think, because we, we're aware of the extra challenges that, that our finance department and our Director of Finance have had the past year or two. So I think, I think that's a worthwhile exercise.
Madam Chair, I would just say, I, I, Madam President, I would just say that I like Jennifer's broader framing of the question.
Right, yeah, I, I'll, I'll second that too, Hank. I think we just want the advice, we want the strategic advice. We don't care where it comes from. If it comes, comes from within the organization, which I'm sure is capable of producing it, that, that would be great. Wouldn't have to necessarily have a new person come in. So I think that's something for you to assess going ahead. But, you know, keep, keep that 150 ready to pull out if we think we can do it without sending it. You know what I mean?
Yep.
Thank you.
Got it. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments on that question? Okay.
Okay, moving down to number six, I am recommending that we bring CSF staff, seasonal staff back up to their full complement, which would be bringing back an additional nine. We currently have nine. I'm not suggesting we go and do any additional contract mowing, which was also fairly expensive. So we still would have savings there, but I'm concerned with the ongoing maintenance of things like our, we have, you know, I forget how many bridges, little bridges we have that have to be maintained. We have benches, we have pavilions, we have trash cans, things that just need to be painted and fixed, signs that need to be put up. And a lot of those things are starting to fall between the gaps a little bit. So I'm suggesting that we, we bring back the additional or put in the budget so that central services can bring back their additional seasonal staff that we've, we've held out for the last two years on. So that's $110,000. It's, it's basically nine seasonal individuals and that's my recommendation. So I, I'll just leave that in the budget for now. And we can, we can talk about it as we start to fine-tune the budget going forward.
Yes, Bob?
Are these people who work throughout the year on a part-time basis or is it largely during the summer?
It's primarily during the, the fall, the, the spring, summer and fall, not so much during the winter. And they're the ones that are, you know, when signs get knocked over, they get, they get repainted, built and put back in place. You know, all, all are, they do the painting, they do maintenance and help with watershed, picking up the litter that's in the lake. They help with a lot of things. And so, but there are basically seasonal folks, as well as doing the mowing, the trimming and that sort of things.
So basically, we're, we're going to double the seasonal expense, seasonal labor expense.
What I'm asking you to do is bring the seasonal labor back to what it was pre-Covid. And the reason I'm doing that is, is I'm really concerned that we're starting to, we're going to see over the next couple of years, being shorthanded, that things like painting projects and things like that, that are just general seasonal maintenance isn't getting done. And then that's going to end up costing us capital money for replacements sooner than necessary. So yes, I am suggesting going from where we are now with nine seasonals back up to where we were, which was 18 seasonals.
Aaron?
Yes, Jennifer?
Hank, can you help us understand? Because we, I thought we went down the number of seasonal staff because we were also reducing the number of times that we did the mowing. Is staff actually reduced the number of times or are they feeling bad and trying to mow more? What is causing us to need to go back up? And if we go back up, are we increasing the amount of mowing?
This is, the mowing that I talked about reducing had to do with the median strips. And we were, we had a contract where we were essentially, we were, were paid about $40,000, a little bit more than $40,000 a year from VDOT to mow the VDOT median strips. In order to do that, we were putting a lot of our staff on it and they were mowing it weekly. However, in so doing, we also were engaged in a, in a contract with a contract mowing service to mow some of our own areas, including our ball fields. And that contract mowing was costing us about $240,000 a year. That has been eliminated, the contract mowing. But with Covid in, in place, we also had to cut a seasonal staff. And we, we cut some of the, the CSF staff that would have been doing the mowing. So what I came back to all of you last year and shared is that we're going to reduce the amount of mowing that's taking place in the median strips. It may not look like it, but it has been slowed down. But it's also because management and CSF have been, been involved in some of the mowing as well. So it's basically been all hands on deck and be going and mowing the median strips. I don't believe that's sustainable. The other aspect that's not getting done is, as I keep mentioning, painting and general repair work of all of our other assets, fences that need to be fixed and that sort of thing. Painting of fences, signage that falls down, litter that doesn't, it's not getting picked up. All that also is taking, being done by seasonal staff. And that's some of the things that's starting to fall between the cracks. So while I would not bring back contractual mowing, what we would do is have a couple more hands on deck mowing. Management would be able to stay and manage as opposed to jumping on a mower. And we'd start to, to start the process of painting and picking up the litter and, and putting the signs back in place and mending the fences as we were doing prior to Covid.
Yes, Jennifer?
So just, I'm just trying to simplify it in my head. So what I'm, what I'm hearing is that in last year, before we did the elimination of the mowing, we had a $240,000 contract plus this $110,000. So that would have been $350,000 more that we had in the budget in a previous year. We reduced that to nothing for 2021. And now you're asking to increase it to 110. So it went from 350 to zero to 110. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
That's, that's what I'm asking to be done, is that we, we consider bringing back the seasonal staff to, to continue to do the quality maintenance work that residents used to. But I would not bring back the contracted mowing, which again was about $240,000. So we're still below what we were prior to Covid. But I'm bringing back seasonal staff that we need to do both mowing and actually other maintenance that's falling between, between the cracks. We certainly can do a breakdown on all this if it would help. I can do, just as you've asked me to do on a couple of other things, I can break it all down and put that into a, hopefully an easier to, to read document.
But we're, we're going to keep the mowing at the reduced levels?
The, the mowing is going to stay at the level you're experiencing right now. If I can bring back seasonal, some seasonal staff should see it improve even beyond where it is right now. I would not bring back the contracted mowing at $240,000 for our ball fields. We, the interesting thing, even though we've been mowing the median strips for VDOT less than we did in previous years, I've received virtually no complaints. That's, that's different than, I think, the first year I was here when the VDOT had not awarded us the contract. And so legally, we could not mow the median strips and the grass got to be about a foot high. That was my first introduction to getting our membership angry because I was, I, the phone did not stop ringing. So I'm very pleased with what the, the staff has been able to do. But it's just not sustainable the way we're doing it. And that's why I would like to bring back additional seasonal employees to, to help with that and other maintenance that's falling between the cracks.
Yeah, I just, I just, I don't think we can afford for our beautiful community to start looking not so beautiful. So.
What I will do is, what, what I'll do is I'll do a little bit more of a breakdown to, to address Jennifer's questions, which I think are, are very good questions. You know, what's the number exactly? What are we adding back? Are we, we? So I will, we'll put that, that little spreadsheet together that explains what we cut, what we're bringing back and how it will improve. So I'll take care of that for the next go-round. I see your hand, Bob?
A quick suggestion you may, given the amount of development that's occurring in the TSAs and along the major thoroughfares with medians, it might be worth reaching out to the developers since keeping the approaches to their developments nice and, nice and neat and tidy might be a, a good selling point.
That, that's a good point. And I, I have noticed that myself as have other staff, so I will take care of that as well.
Anybody else? Since I can't see you all, anybody else wish to say something?
Okay, number seven, I will hold off. What I'd like to do is have that brought to the IT committee. And that's the one recommend, where it was suggested that we might need to add some additional IT internal staff support. I think that's a, a good one to take to the IT committee and get their feedback on, once they've had a chance to kind of look at what we're doing and how we're doing it. So I'll, I'll hold off on that one like I held off, I think it was number three. Going to, then to question number eight, I am recommending that we create, it was, Chris has asked for this, that we add a position to help continue moving the capital projects along more swiftly. He believes he knows that needs another capital project staff member to do that. That individual is fairly skilled in the salary range in, in our market, is between 70 and 80,000 dollars. And it would have, help to eliminate and reduce the carry-forward projects, which is one of the things I know that the fiscal committee is concerned with. We need to, if we're going to budget the money, we need to do the projects in, in the budget year. We've, we've done them. Chris has done a great job whittling down that list and getting it smaller and smaller. He shared with me, he thinks he needs one more person to, to help whittle it down even further. So that's what that's about. And I, I don't know what your, your all's feelings are on that one. I, I continue to leave it in the budget. It could be something if we need to eliminate, to cut costs going forward, we, we can certainly do that. Yes, Bob?
Can you remind me of how many full-time staff are in the capital projects division? And how many, how many, I believe there are like 28 projects that are now in process. There's a number similar to.
Yeah, Chris, Chris has himself plus two others. And we're, we're, we're going to have a retirement of one of these individuals. So that individual is going to be replaced. And, and so Chris is not only managing the, the projects, he's managing the overall department, which is, as you, as you also know, very, I think all of you know, is a sizable amount of money. Some of these projects are very, very big and complex, like Lake Thoreau Pool. Some of them are smaller, but nevertheless, they've still got their own little complexities to them. So Chris is managing all of it. He's also going out and, and hands-on with a couple of these projects, especially the larger ones. His other two project managers are, you know, making sure all the things are done to our standards, our specs, all the permits are in place and just managing the project. So there's a lot of work for two individuals, plus Chris, trying to manage the whole department. So that, that's kind of where we are. It's Chris plus two, two full-time individuals managing all these projects.
Madam President?
Yes, John?
I, I support this being added to the budget. It was once my job to oversee capital improvements in, in a county, in the area. And if, if you do not have adequate staff to manage the contractors, you lose control of the projects and the costs and the, the timeframes. And, and we have a slug, a whole wave of tennis courts and pools heading our way. And I think we need to be prepared to, to manage those. So I support this.
Thank you, John. Any other comments? Jennifer?
Chris has done a fabulous job, you know, the last few years where he's been leading this and getting projects off the list. I remember, I think it was last year and the year before, listening to prior boards say, don't buy, kind of the, the message of, to Chris, don't buy it off more than you can chew. Like, are we going to approve too much in capital funding? Is it possible for you, you to get it done? He's done a really great job of not only getting what he puts in the budget then, but also trying to get those carryforwards caught up too. I, I get, I see the wave coming of capital projects and how much of the big renovations we're going to have to do. But I also see the wave, and we'll probably see it again next time we talk about Triple RF, that at like that 2026 year, it starts to drastically go down. And so I'm wondering if this is a position that, you know, might be needed for a few years to get us through this group of projects? And, you know, is it worth exploring like a contract employee or, you know, a firm that we can partner with so that Chris has that oversight of somebody, but RA is not necessarily taking on the position for the long term? Or, you know, Hank, there might be, I don't, I don't know the other employees in that division. But like you said, you have a retirement coming up. Is, is it a position where we hire for it, get, get the person ramped up? And then three or four, you know, years from now, we see another retirement in the horizon or a way to reduce back to the three-staff people through attrition later on? Just from a strategy standpoint, are, are there other options that we might want to explore? And then if, if we think that the, the staff member is about 70,000 annually, want to make sure that you included that, the budget, in the budget, the staff benefits portion, not just the salary?
Yes, John?
I, I like the question you raised, Jennifer. And in the construction industry, based on my limited but intense experience, limited-term positions in capital projects is a very frequent thing. So Hank, perhaps you could come back with us talking about the feasibility of this being a limited-term position.
I, I will do that, certainly. Okay.
Yes, Bob?
I think this might be an excellent position for somebody to grow in, gain the experience and, you know, get them in a position where they can move on at our, at a salary that we just can't afford and, you know, in a three to, three to seven-year period of time.
Okay, I'll look at that. I just would, would point out that what's been, the individuals that have been attracted to this job, we've been very blessed to have them, have been individuals that have been working in the trade quite a bit for a long, long time. And they just didn't want to do the physical work anymore, but they have an enormous amount of experience. The individual who's retiring has been with us for over 20 years. There's another individual that will probably be retiring in a couple of years down the road, same scenario. The individual that, that was in CSF that just retired last year, actually Chris's father, has been, had been with us for a long, long time, had been in the industry a long, long time. So the thing is kind of interesting and what we benefit from is if you can get those folks that are kind of approaching their retirement and they, they've got this, this enormous amount of experience that they can bring to bear on all of our, our issues and all of our situations. That's what we benefited from. And be honest with you, that's what I'd be looking for. I know that's what Chris would be looking for. Um, that's what we benefited from and, and be honest with you, that's what I'd be looking for. I know that's what Chris would be looking for. So, you know, someone who's near retirement, um, also has got a exceedingly large um palette of experience. Cause we do a lot of concrete, we do, we just do all aspects of uh capital projects and construction here. And uh, we've been blessed to have some really, really talented uh folks here over the past couple of years. So, but I will look at it from a limited-term position and I will look at it, um, uh, you know, as a kind of a, get somebody into business and s- and understand that they may, may move on.
Yeah, and this is Larry, if I could just chime in one, one point on this. Uh, some of you may recall, um, the first, I don't know, it was about three years ago, it was right before Hank got on board, that department had four people. And when the former director left, we did not replace that person at that time. We wanted to see, quite frankly, we, and we figured we could uh do a good test with Chris and he has, as you all have noted, he's done a very, very good job, but that department was four people.
Thanks, Larry. That's good to know, be reminded of. I, I, um, I, I know how um buried Chris has been and how tough this has been for him. And I don't, I, 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 you know, as Reston continues to age, I think that, you know, that we're going to continue for quite a long time with capital projects and I would, I would support this. I, I think, and I, and I think to Dave Kerr's point too, it's, it's, if, if we can reduce our carryover, I think that would be a good thing. Carry forward rather. Anybody else?
Okay, well, all, all of this has been very helpful. Um, so thank you. It's, it's helping giving publicists with direction. Number, uh, number nine, question number nine has to do with creating the environmental service department. Um, this is essentially replacing Claudia's position. Um, and the way I see it is we have three options and I, I guess, I don't want to get on a rabbit hole with this, just um, right now, we could, we could budget it just to replace Claudia. That would be, be A. B would be budgeted to create the department the way it was described, as Tim has pointed out, which would cost us between a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred thousand dollars essentially. Um, or C, we can let it run its course for one more year. We've, we've, we've tried to put staff in there. Um, not tried, we have put staff in those positions. Uh, they've been added for about a half year. Um, we could let it run one more year, see how it goes, um, save ourselves a little bit of money. Um, and then do an assessment after a full two-year or twenty-four-month cycle and move forward. So I, I see that as a, a three basic options. And um, and I, you know, the, the budget I just, the draft budget I just put in front of you in, includes uh adding the department. And it also includes letting it run its course. But as we get to the next draft, I kind of would like to narrow that down to one or the other.
Yes, Tim?
Uh, Madam President, uh, this is a bit long-winded, uh, so I beg your indulgence. Uh, I, I want to begin by emphasizing, uh, as Hank points out, this proposal is not, does not constitute a new, a new expense. It, it actually goes beyond replacing Claudia, uh, because the proposal seeks to replace the loss of several experienced environmental professionals from RA staff, including Claudia, but also Patricia Greenberg and a number of others. Uh, the, the comments from the Environmental Advisory Committee and from, from many RA members who support uh the hiring of a senior environmental official are impressive, very impressive in terms of the total number of comments, the thoughtfulness and the quality of their advocacy and the background and experience of the people making the comments. Um, in the, in the weeks and months uh since those comments were submitted, we've gone through a lot. The heatwaves in late June set a new all-time Canadian temperature record of a hundred and twenty-one degrees. And the overwhelming majority of scientists are telling us that the next few years are really make or break years for climate action. The, the window to prevent the worst impacts of climate change is closing rapidly. Um, hiring a senior environmental official will greatly help Reston to provide even better leadership on climate change and just as important on other pressing environmental challenges identified in the RESA reports and, and in other reports prepared by the Environmental Advisory Committee. Um, I, I hope this doesn't sound sanctimonious, but in fifteen years, if our kids and grandkids ask us why Reston Association did not have a senior environmental official during our tenure on the RA board to help address uh climate change and other environmental challenges, it's not going to be persuasive to say we were trying to save some money. Um, this proposal will promote Reston's core value of environmental stewardship and our status as a biophilic community. It, it actually could also save money by fostering partnerships with other communities in the area for joint discounted purchases of electric vehicles and other assets. Hank, I love the story that you tell about, uh, you know, when's the best time to plant a tree? Is it the spring or the fall? No, the best time to plant a tree is twenty years ago. And the best time to hire a Director of Environmental Services is twenty years ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Other comments, questions? Yes, Bob? If I'm muted.
Sometimes my spacebar works and other times it doesn't, and it didn't this time. I heartily support uh Tim's position on the environmental, the environmental uh department. I think it's, it's representative of the principles of Reston and we should adhere to them. And it's going to be, as Tim has identified, it's going to be becoming increasingly more important as the years go on.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else? Yes, John?
Uh, I totally agree with uh Tim and with Bob that um Reston Association has a unique opportunity and therefore obligation to exercise leadership, uh, certainly within our community, but to do the extent we can in, in our area to promote uh more responsible environmental policies and actions. I, I am at this point not convinced that setting up a separate department uh is the best way to do that. And let me, let me, I'm open to it, but I, I, I need to better understand a few things. What exactly is the environmental body of work we want to accomplish with a, a new department? Um, and secondly, are our current environmental resources inadequate to achieve that additional body of work and, and if so specifically how? And then, does the success of this new body of work um include and assume proportionate increases in capital spending? And if so, how much of that additional capital spending can we afford to undertake? And, and finally, let me, let me indicate a concern that I, I believe I heard in the, the discussions on this in early uh in, in, in May, around May. And, and I believe I heard some people suggesting that this should be such an elevated position that there would be direct reporting of this um environmental resource director to the board rather than to the CEO. I would not support that. Uh, if, if I misunderstood, I, I apologize, but I think I heard one or two folks suggest that and I would strongly oppose that. I do not think um this person should report directly to the board, but rather to the CEO. And that, that seems to be implied in calling it a environmental department. Uh, though I'm concerned because new departments have new overhead costs. So anyway, th- those would be the questions I would need to have answered before I could support the specific form of this very correct concern. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Sarah?
I would like to move that this board directs the CEO to recruit a Director of Environmental Services as a senior leadership, as part of the senior leadership team. And if there's a second, I'm open to tweaking the language, but I just thought I'll throw the motion out there. If there's a second. Okay.
Was that a second, Tim?
A second for purposes of discussion.
Okay, we're in discussion.
Just to clarify, it's just a senior leadership position as a Director of Environment. So uh, John, to address your question, it would be reporting, I think more to Larry before and through Larry to Hank. So if that's how SLT reports. So, we've all said we're for it, so just thought I'd throw it out there.
Karen?
I.
Jennifer?
Yes, Jennifer.
Sorry, you all had you, you sounded like you had a thought. I just wanted to let you know I was out here.
Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, um, so the comments I have related to the position is, what I think is really interesting about this concept, and I, I think I read in the member comments, and if not, maybe I heard it at the EAC, past EAC meetings, is I believe there might be a potential revenue component to um having a position like this. And revenue might not come from the, you know, we're going to add a cost of something on to something we charge the members. The revenue component that I feel like I heard was this is somebody that might be able to go out and get, find, find the association money to do the things that we really want to do, like find grants that we might be able to apply for. Um, and I, I think that that's a really interesting piece and, and may somewhat satisfy some of um, John, your, your concern, your conceptual concerns of as you add a new department, you add additional operating expenses. And so I would like to see um something like that explored um as part of bringing um a new person on it. Is there a way for them to fund um things that EAC or this position might recommend, or is there a way for them to bring in additional revenue for projects that the association is already doing?
Thank you, Jennifer. Tim?
Uh, just wanted to direct, um, I just wanted to answer Director Mooney's concern about who this senior official would report to. Uh, I'm not sure where the idea came from that it, that this person might report to the board, but the uh, the Chair of the Environmental Advisory Committee has confirmed that as far as the unanimous recommendation of uh EAC is concerned, this individual would report to the Chief Operating Officer or to the, or to the Chief Executive Officer, depending on what the CEO's preference would be, but it would not report directly to the board, just to take that narrow concern off the table.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I am, uh, I'm not, I'm not for or against this in this particular moment, but I, I think that this is a question that's going to impact the budget that we ultimately approve. And so I, I'm, I'm, don't think I'm comfortable voting on a motion tonight.
Fair enough.
Any more discussion?
Karen, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, I just want to, want to understand clearly what I'm hearing. Am I hearing correctly that the motion on the table is not only to, to, to direct the CEO um to hire an individual to be the senior manager, but is also telling the CEO how he's going to organize the, the structure of the department? So I, I heard that they just said that this individual is going to report to the Chief Operating Officer. I just want to make sure that if that's indeed the case, that, that I understand what my role is.
Hank, let me, let me stop you right there. No.
Sarah, that's exactly what you said.
Yeah, that was.
Sure I understand where I, where this is going.
Yeah, that was, I think me and Tim both were addressing John's question. We're not asking this person to report to the board. Just clarifying that. We don't want them reporting to the board. How they report internally, that's totally an operation decision up to you, not.
Well, the motion was that they would report to the Chief Operating Officer.
No, 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 no. The motion was um that we direct the CEO to hire um the Director of Environmental Services as part of your senior leadership team. That's it. I further under discussion clarified to John that the reporting, we don't want them reporting to the board, at least not according to my motion. That's completely your decision. I just asked that they be a director-level position as part of the senior leadership team.
I, I guess a follow-up question. So are you passing a motion for me to add an expense for this year, or are you asking me to add the expense as part of the twenty-twenty-two budget?
I'll let the board weigh in on that. I would say SAP because in my mind, I'm thinking this is uh Claudia's replacement, but I, that's just me, my personal opinion. But the rest of the board, I'd let the board weigh in on that. Are we looking at this as an immediate, an effect or a future down the line? I'm open to both. As long as it gets done, that's all that matters. I'm open to both. And again, we don't know if we have board support, so I'll let the board.
Yes, Tim?
Um, I, I would be concerned with imposing an, an immediate obligation, um, both in terms of the agenda for tonight, which is to, to discuss the uh upcoming budget and also in terms of uh advocating for the EAC proposals, both of which speak to the twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three budget. Um, and so from my perspective, uh, what I have in mind is an obligation that would arise with those new budgets.
Okay with that. If you want me to clarify the motion to include that, I'm happy to. The call vote?
Yes, Bob.
And I'm. I think that uh I would like to take some time to better define the role uh so that we have a, a, a better understanding of where in the organizational fit and the responsibilities so that it will be easier to go and seek that person. So I agree with Tim that it should be part of the twenty-twenty-two budget. But I'm totally in agreement that we need the position.
Thank you. John, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I just want to say I, I will be abstaining on this vote uh because while I'm sympathetic to the importance and possibly to the position, I think we need a better definition of its body of work, this position's body of work. So that's why I will be abstaining on the vote.
Yes, Mike?
Yeah, I'm going to echo that same concern. I, I'd like to hear a recommendation from Hank about what this position should look like, what a department or sub-department or whatever it is should look like um before we, we direct anything. But I, I support it in principle, of course, but need to, I don't think we should do it on the fly tonight.
I agree. Yeah, Bob?
We should, no, maybe I'm being redundant, but keep it in, keep it as an element of the, the current budget.
That was.
Twenty-twenty-two budget.
That was my point earlier. It's, I don't think it's, it's our place tonight to, to vote on this motion. I think this is, this is a budget consideration.
Yeah, I, I've heard it loud and clear. We will, we will certainly um include it in the budget and I'll, I will make sure that um I get more thought and answer Mike's, Mike Collins's uh question to me as well.
Folks, there's a, there's a motion and a second. We need to vote.
We need to vote.
Um, okay, all is in favor. All is opposed. All is abstaining, is abstaining.
I clutched on that one, clutched on that one because I intended, I'm for the position, but yeah, push it to 2022.
Yeah, it is. I think it is 2022.
I thought that's what I was voting on. Sorry.
Yeah.
I'm no longer abstaining. I vote.
I, I, did you, did you amend the motion? Because I think, Sarah, your original motion was to direct the.
It wasn't constrained.
Right, it wasn't constrained. I can, do you want me to clarify the motion, Karen? Would that help?
Well, we just voted on this motion, so I think, I think we will, we will be voting on this when we approve the budget.
I think Bob just changed his vote on the, on the understanding.
The understanding was, my understanding, and the reason that I hesitated to vote was I understood it to be an immediate requirement that Hank go out and seek.
That's what it sounded like to me. And I, I don't think we need to vote on each individual components of a, a budget that's in process.
Yeah, so let me restate the motion because I think there's some confusion. The board directs staff to hire an environmental director as a part of senior leadership team. And to further clarify, as Tim said, as part of the 2022 budget.
Is there a second?
A second there.
I think the original second, Tony, we might need some clarification. It's, I just reinstated the same motion. I didn't make a new, new one.
I think we need to amend, someone needed to amend it.
You've amended the motion.
To add the date?
Have we indeed already voted on the previous motion? So it may be past the point of amendment.
Okay, well, then I think that Bob would change his vote, or he changed it before we finished the vote. Is my understanding.
What, what was the vote, Madam President? Do you know?
It was three abst, I built three abstentions, one no, and the rest were yes.
And three yeses, yes.
And Bob changed from abstention to yes.
So that makes it.
I'm confused. I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't, I don't know. That makes it, okay, so it's.
Four yeses.
It's four, it's four yeses and well, but you've, you changed your vote after the, we called the question, didn't you, Bob?
Yes.
I don't think that you had closed the vote, but either way, if we want this motion to fail, then someone's just going to throw a motion out there to, to do it for the 2022 budget, and that one's going to pass.
Happy to do that. Okay, do we want to do that? Let's let this fail.
Let's make it clean, be clean, clean.
Okay.
Clean it up.
So I'll reinstate. The board directs CEO to hire a director of environmental services as a, as part of his senior leadership team for the 2022 budget.
Second.
All is in favor. All is opposed. Two opposed, abstain. Okay, so that time it passed. Okay.
Okay, I, I can, thank you. I, I know it gives me clear directions. I can move on very quickly. We're approaching the hour when we say we were adjourned. Number 10 is actually a capital project that we'll bring up next month. That has to do with Barton Hill Tennis Courts. And number 11, basically, we are working, and I don't have the data in front of me right now. It's on whether or not, what would it cost us if we extended the hours of the pools that are most popular right now, people are asking for? So I don't have enough information to answer that, any questions you might ask me around it. But we're going to, the next go around of this budget, we will put together, what do we cost to extend the hours of the pools that we're getting a lot of feedback on, as opposed to maintaining them the way we're currently doing, which is kind of shutting some down and rotating staff over to another one. So number 10, we'll do next meeting on capital. And number 11, I, I need to get more information on. I don't have enough at this point in time to go forward on it. So with that, you all have answered the questions I need answered. You've given me some clear direction. And I, I'm in a position to move forward a much stronger way on the next, next version of the operating and the, the revenue and the expense side of the budget. So thank you. That's all I have, unless you have some questions for me.
Karen? Good. Yeah. Yes, Sarah.
Two quick questions. One is the Barton Hill, why wouldn't that go through some PrAC process? And skip that and come to us. And the second question is the pool hours. I've seen other hotels where they have a disclaimer about, you know, swim at your own risk without lifeguards. Could we do adult-only hours with that kind of a option? Legal, legally, what's our liability if we did something like that?
Well, and, and not, not trying to be smug, and I know Tony's on this conversation, I'm going to tell you, he's going to say no. We can't let somebody do that in one of our pools. But Tony, if you want to answer that question, please go ahead.
Um, well, it's a multifaceted question. I wasn't prepared to offer a legal opinion on it. But just off the top of my head, you can't discriminate against age pursuant to the Fair Housing Act. So saying, I'm sorry. As I was saying, it's an FHA violation to discriminate against familial status. And so while we have not what's called adult-only swim, we have exercise swim or fitness swim. So simply taking it off and saying only, adult-only swim is just a non-starter.
Jennifer?
I, I'd like to echo though the research component of that. I've actually been reading some articles of other homeowners associations doing it. And I actually thought Larry might chime in and say, oh, Jennifer, we have researched that before and we've, you know. So if we have not in the past, as an association, researched that potential, I, and I, I wouldn't say for adult only, but because I, I, I read that in some of the articles that I had seen is that adult only was against the law. But I, I think that it is worthwhile for us to consider alternatives where we can to help give the membership the services that they want, but also potentially find ways to contain the costs. And think that there might be a possibility there, a, a way to do it, where we might take on a little bit more risk. Maybe there's some additional insurance that we need to mitigate that risk. But is it possible for us to do without a lot of risk? And we have talked about how lifeguards are very difficult to, to find each summer. And if, if there is a possibility of, of adding a component, you know, or maybe even doing a trial run with one pool where we, we, we do it for one pool and we figure out how, how it worked. I've also heard a lot of members over the years say they don't, they don't even necessarily want to use the pool after hours, but using the hot tubs after hours is something they're really interested in. And so maybe there's a way where, I don't know, we add a gate and they get to use the hot tub. So, so something, something along those lines, I think, is worth researching.
We'll do the research and we'll, we'll get back to you on that. The follow, the, the first part of the question was, why would we be talking about Barton Hill without taking it to PrAC? It has been generally reviewed by the, the Recreations Facilities Working Group. Right now Barton Hill has major problems with the court, Chris is pointing out. And is, it's basically unplayable with the cracks that are in it. So the, the point about bringing it up right now was because more than likely, we're going to do something with that court sooner than, than we thought. And converting it to a pickleball court seemed to be the right, right move. Talking with the tennis folks, they said it's the right place to do it. And from a kind of a fairness perspective, the only place we can play pickleball right now is at Autumn Wood on the north side. And we thought anything we would add that would be pickleball on the south side, that's the perfect place to do it. So it was not trying to usurp PrAC. It was just trying to take it, take a look at an evolving situation right now. Because I don't believe the courts, based on the, the cracks, are going to be able to be open next year. So, but we can certainly run it through PrAC.
Yes, Sarah.
The, the question was just why it wasn't run through PrAC. Thanks, Hank. I wasn't suggesting that it should, but thank you for answering that. One thing when we come back around, I think would help, at least would help me, is if we had some net revenue numbers when we're talking about income. Because pickleball income looks like, and I might be wrong, I think it said like 11,000, but the cost involved for adding it was 15. Same thing with sort of non-assessment or I think facilities rental. It would help decision-making if we had net numbers. Next staff.
Well, I can, I can tell you right now that tennis and pickleball and swimming, there are no net numbers. So it's a, so I will, I will do the research on pickleball. But none of, those are amenities that are for the benefit of the membership and they ultimately cost us money. But pickleball is the fastest growing sport in the country right now and is exceedingly popular. And if you go over to Autumn Wood any night to see what's going on over there, there's long lines waiting to play. So, but I, I will do my best. There, there will not be any net numbers. I will tell you that. We'll show you what we project income to be that might offset, offset expenses. But, but certainly with rentals, we can get the, the net numbers put together on those.
That, that would help. That's great. Thank you, Hank.
Sure.
Yes, Jennifer?
I have a list of things and I'm going to try to go through them quickly. I'm sure your guys are not surprised, but if there's something you guys want to comment on, maybe you guys can wave and I can stop at that topic before I get to the next one, because I don't want to, to get into a situation where you guys don't, are not commenting on some of the things that I'm saying. The first one was on the assessments piece, I thought we would see a projection of the new, some of the new units that will, that will be finished being developed and then occupied. And I'd be interested to know what you guys think the 2022 and 2023 projections for that are so that we can add those assessment dollars. Is it 20 units? Is it 100 units? Because I think if we, we have an idea of what that is, that's going to add some revenue to the side, that side of, of the budget, which we would love to see. The second one is, Hank, during your explanation, you were talking about you can't project what the housing market is going to be. And, you know, I, I'm certainly not an economist, but I feel like I have been reading that, you know, the projection out there is that, you know, by mid 22, we're going to start seeing a bust in that housing market. And I feel like we've been hearing from my time on Comprehensive Plan Task Force that we're already having rental rates issue, rental occupancy issues. And so I wonder if we don't increase, what, you know, use this year as a factor for next year and keep it the same instead of increasing it. But I, you know, I'm not an expert in that area, but I, I think it's worth considering what, what the economists are saying related to the housing. For pickleball, I had that one on my list, kind of similar to, to Sarah. And it's not so much that we have a tennis facility. We're going to convert it to a pickleball facility. So it would be the conversion rate to a pickleball facility, those costs minus any additional revenue or expenses, which I would assume is still probably a negative number. But I think that that gives us an idea of the membership value component as a board and being able to, to think through it from, you know, is 20,000 negative or 100,000 negative or whatever the number ends up be, is, is that a member value that we're willing to pay to increase it? I talked about my pool costs and I believe that you had increasing pool hours as, as something that was on your list. And I wanted to, because I remember Larry had mentioned that during a fiscal meeting, like how much would it cost us to increase the number, you know, pool hours? I would love to see that because I do feel like we've been hearing from members this year, you know, like, why did the pool hours decrease? Or why are my pool, my pools used to be close to a day and now they're close two days? I feel like we've been hearing trinkets of that from the membership that might be worth throwing those numbers out there and, and considering them.
Jennifer, this is Larry. I'll just, Lori is working on some incremental numbers.
Wonderful.
Certain percent increase in total pool hours. So I think she'll have like two or three different.
Options.
Just to consider.
That would be wonderful. Thanks, Larry. I thought you guys were working on it. The other piece is I, under the HR area, I would consider putting in a conservative factor. And I believe that you and Melissa on a fiscal version that we had seen earlier a couple of months ago, might have had a, and a concert, I call it a conservative factory, call it a turnover factor. But something that shows that if we budget $5 million in staff, staffing costs, we think that we're not actually going to spend $5 million because something is going to happen, staff are going to leave, we're going to have periods where those positions are vacant. And because staffing is such a high number, putting a conservative factor in, I think, would really be helpful because we've consistently seen staffing numbers under spent and over budgeted. And so that might make, help us get to a more realistic number.
Jennifer, we do have that built in this time.
Oh, you do? Because I don't remember seeing it on that sheet, the red, white, or the red and blue sheet. Did I miss the line item? I remember seeing it, Melissa, on the one that went to fiscal two month, month or two ago.
Yeah.
So I'll go and look again. I'm sorry if I missed it.
That's okay. We may just need to call it out better in the materials.
Okay. So you said that there weren't a lot of expense cuts, but I feel like I remember things last year that we were adding to the budget because they were COVID-related expenses. And I'd have to go back and look and see, but I, I thought, I want to say like in Laura's area, you know, this is like last August, September, but I feel like we added some COVID expected expenses. And I, I thought that we might see a little bit of expense cuts because, and maybe we need to have a discussion on this, are we still
This is Laura.
expecting to be spending COVID-related stuff? Yes, go ahead, Laura.
Um, so we were able to work with the Friends of Reston to, to fund those additional COVID expenses. So those won't be needed or to be included in the 2022 budget.
Perfect. So if they are not needed, that maybe next version we can.
There was not a, there's not a decrease. Those, that was funded by the Friends of Reston as the expense was covered through them. To this year.
Oh, okay. So you guys knew before we approved the budget and had already cut them out?
We had, essentially, we, we created a, a laundry list of items that we knew we would, we would need, ran that to the Friends of Reston and they approved half of that. It was $20,000 and asked that we come back after 10. And luckily, we only went in and asked for almost $2,000 more and that was all that we needed for the rest of the year. So moving into 2022, there won't be any additional dollars for COVID-related expenses.
Okay. Um, on the IT piece, and I, I know you said we would talk about this later, but can you help us understand, I thought I heard during board orientation that you guys were actively recruiting for an IT specialist? And so I think that would make the IT team four. So on the list, can you help us clarify or understand, is it two more for next year? Or is the two including the one that we're recruiting for already?
We, we have three IT people right now. We held up hiring one position this year. And we would be talking about filling that position and. And we would be talking about filling that position and possibly adding one more. But again, at this point in time, I believe it needs to go to the IT committee for them to give us their opinion and their advice.
Okay, so I thought, I thought you guys were already actively recruiting, so you held, held that position. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Um, if you could also take something like the Red River contract and compare that to the staffing changes, I think that would be really helpful to see, you know, would we reduce the Red River contract? Would it go away? You know, those types of comparisons. Um, tennis instruction. I believe when I was at fiscal last month, it was up by like 60%. Then, and so I was wondering, I didn't see anything in your projections that thought we might collect additional tennis revenue. So I was just curious, do you think that's kind of an anomaly this year?
Would you like me to chime in, Hank?
Yeah, I, I couldn't hear that one very clearly. If you could take it, Laura, that would help.
Sure. Um, so, Jennifer, just to clarify, you're talking about the projection of, for, for this year, the revenue we've incurred this year. So remember that. Okay, thanks. Remember 30, 4,300 is tennis and pickleball. So it's both of those combined. And yes, it is, it's, it's, it's a great business to be in right now, tennis and, and pickleball, as many are, are playing outside, picking up the sport and, and, and playing more often. So we don't have a projection yet until really we get through this year to see where we may end up and what the interest is for 2022. So being conservative to not inflate when we aren't sure, this would be my answer for that.
So do you want to wait till the end of the summer, and you might have something in September, October to suggest? Are you talking about waiting one more year?
Yes, we would definitely be, be closer and be able to make a more informed recommendation for moving forward, as well as collection of surveys from our participants on their intent to continue, and be able to take a look at what the tennis and pickleball industry are, are projecting for future years as well.
Perfect. And then Laura, my next one is on camps.
Well, stick around.
Um, I thought we did the same with camps, is that we, we projected that we would not be able to fully take the number of students in 2021, you know, or have 100% camp capacity, and, and obviously the expenses that go with it. So I thought I would see a recommendation there for what, what we might do in 2022, because we, I thought we were lower this year, going into this year, because of COVID.
So our, at the time of the budget was approved, the direction that we were given was to go into this year as a hope for the best, and hopefully we will see levels go back to our full complement. So that's what was budgeted for.
Okay.
Yes.
Then, did I hear that Tom, see, I'm trying to remember back to last Wednesday night. So how are you feeling about camps, I would say, for, for this year? Are you see, you feel like you're seeing any?
You've been actually doing, doing very well. We have exceeded the number of registrants, the slots sold from 2019. So that is definitely something we did not expect. And it was just an unknown environment with, with parents sending children to camp. So that's been very successful this year. And that's also despite the fact that some of you may remember that U.S. Geological Survey, we use it for science camp, we use their property, and it's, we weren't able, they weren't able to extend us that, that agreement to use that property, but do intend to next year. So our camps, from bringing forward some of those camps that we weren't able to run in 2020, like Watercraft Camp, and then it just expansion of some existing, we were able to get the registrations in. So the camps is going very well. So we will have, hopefully, we'll see that trend continue. But would like to get to the end of the registration period. We still have through August to go. So we'll have some really good numbers for camps at the end of August.
Okay, so that would be perfect. And I remember now the, the science camp, that was the one we couldn't do, from last week, when Tom was telling us of fiscal. And then my last one is related to staffing. And, and I want to be really careful, because I, I think that we all believe that the staff that we have at the association do, do really great by our membership. But, and it's, but it's also really easy as a board to support new staff positions, especially this early on in, in the process. But I do think between staffing and between capital, when we get to that session, those are the two areas where we are really going to struggle to get to an assessment rate that the whole board is comfortable with. And I, I, I just caution us to, to really look at, at those two areas, because I think that there's probably a percentage, and I, I would ask Tom maybe to do a little bit of analysis, there's a percentage of hard costs that we have as an association on the expense side. And then there is staff on top of that. And we can only afford so much before we're going to get to a number that we're not comfortable in approving for assessments. And I, I think that we need to be very careful there and maybe compare, you know, the, the staffing ratios to whole budgets of other, you know, similar entities that we would benchmark ourselves against, and maybe use that as a potential marker, you know, certainly challenge the staff if there's any efficiencies, or if there are things that you think that the board or the membership are requesting that aren't, aren't as valuable, or we're spending a lot of money to get services. Is there are ways that we can be creative in still providing services, or are there sunsetting of services? Because when I did an analysis last year, just personally, you know, we were in the 70% range for total budget to, to staff. And a decade ago, we were in the 50s as a percentage. So we've increased the number of staff, and that has probably brought us a lot of value. But if we continue down that road and also have huge expenses on the side of replacing our assets, then we'll be stuck in this pickle of trying to decide, is the asset more important, or is a staff member more important? And that's a really difficult position for, for us as a board to be in, and certainly encourage our members to also, you know, provide us feedback, because in the end, those are the two things, personally, I think, are going to be the most difficult decisions we make in this budget process. Thank you for being patient, guys.
Okay. If there's nothing else, do have a motion to adjourn?
I just have one quick request. As we move forward with the budget, for those non-personnel cost issue, well, non-salary issues, there should, I think there should be an inflation factor included as we move forward, at least to kind of set the ground rules for the next couple of years. July 14th, Wall Street Journal survey of 35 top economists said they were looking for inflation to average about 2.54% between now and 2023. And that doesn't sound like a lot, but when you put it into, you know, when you consider that we're, you know, basically running a $20 million budget, it is a significant amount of money. And we should at least have some idea where, where our expenses are sensitive to inflation.
It's a good point, Bob. We've been factoring, we've been talking about that as well, the inflation, where it's going to go. We'll have that number as well.
Anything else?
I was, one last thing, I was writing furiously when Jennifer was, very good points. Thank you.
Okay, I think this was a really productive meeting. Thank you all. Hank, hopefully this has proved very helpful for you moving forward and staff.
Thank you all very much. It's given us some clear directions on, on a lot of things and, and helped us on many, on many of the others. So thank you. This is, I thought has been very productive.
Motion to adjourn? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? We are adjourned. Have a good rest of your evening, everybody.
Good night, folks.
Thank you, Karen. Thanks, Hank.
Thank you, members who are on the call tonight.
Thank you all.